Okay, we call meeting to order. Bless the Christ, say a prayer for us.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for our many blessings. We ask that you bless this meeting and people in pity. In Jesus' name, I pray it, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we need a motion to accept the election results.
I make a motion that we accept the election results.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to go first?
Mrs. King will go first. He's the new guy. We don't want him getting in before he changes. He's mine. Do you want to run on the desk, Shannan?
I'll say aye, you say no, I'll say ayes.
Okay.
I?
Yes, we can read.
Do some swear that I possess all qualifications for the office of War II Alderman for City of Forsyth as prescribed by law, that I support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Missouri, the provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of this class and ordinances of the City of Forsyth, and faithfully to me and myself in office, so help me God.
Absolutely. Well. Are you gonna... You want to take pictures?
Oh, she wants a picture?
Don't you? Would you?
Did she take the picture? Did you take a picture?
Of course I took pictures.
Well, do you want a picture of you all?
I don't, this is his thing.
I?
See Jack Baker?
Do some swear that I possess all qualifications for the office of Alderman, Ward One, for City of Forsyth as prescribed by law, that I support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Missouri, the provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of this class and ordinances of the City of Forsyth, and faithfully to me and myself in office, so help me God.
I do. Whose signature works, mine or Dennis's?
I say Dennis's.
There's nothing sorry about it, it's probably true. I tried to be a doctor.
Oh, you tried to be a doctor?
Yeah, that's why I practiced that signature.
And if and when Kelly gets here, we will swear her in. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is appoint President of the Board.
I make a motion that we appoint Jack Baker to be President of the Board.
See Jack?
See Jack Baker.
It pays more, doesn't it?
You know, I think maybe just a fraction more than the... The other part of the zero.
The other part of the zero, okay.
Your motion is second, Jack.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Abstain. Next thing on the agenda is assign Alderman Department assignments. And I have made a deal with Larry Lowell. He will take Police Department agreeably. And I will take his job, the girls, which is a non-job. They do all their stuff on their own anyway. And that leaves Fire Department departments. Cheryl, what would you like?
I'm comfortable with either one. I work well with Nathan, and if he's okay with him still being with the Fire Department, I'm happy to do so.
Okay. Then you're in charge of the parts. Keep the water out of the parts. Keep the water out of the parts, your job.
Sandbags. Sandbags. Lots of sandbags. Lots of them.
Okay, we need a motion to approve those assignments.
I make a motion that we approve those assignments as stated.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next thing on the agenda is the bond refinancing update.
I think we've got another inspector.
Oh, hiring an inspector?
I didn't see anything in the packet.
Yeah, I didn't either. Okay, we have a new inspector, Larry Reynolds, who's wanting to retire. We've kind of twisted his arm for a year and a half to keep him here. And we told him he could work part-time. We've got a new applicant, William Madigat.
Madigat.
And he has extensive experience in city works and city public works with Dallas, or Houston, or someplace in there.
Dallas, Fort Worth area.
Okay. We've interviewed William. Personality-wise, he's gonna fit in. He's qualified to do the job. And we're gonna bring him in at $15 an hour. I need a motion for the hiring and the pay.
I'd make a motion to hire William Madigat at $15 an hour for Inspector position.
Is he going to be full-time, or part-time, or...?
He's going to assist Nathan part-time. Full-time, maybe three days a week, depending on how much building we've got going on. If we're gonna be building...
Yeah, he'll be at full-time.
He'll be at full-time, but he'll be hired every time.
I think that's great, because Nathan needs some help. Nathan's done a great job. And Larry Reynolds did a very good job. We were really blessed to have him stay as long as he would stay.
You made a motion?
I've already made a motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye. Okay, now bond refinancing.
Okay, over the past couple of meetings, we've talked about trying to refinance our water and sewer revenue bonds to save a little bit of money on interest due to the given environment. Interest rates are pretty low. And we are proceeding down that road. Last Friday, I sent out the request for terms with the help of Todd Goffey at Piper Sandler. And he will have responses back to us by the end of this month, the 29th, I believe, is the deadline on the request. And then he will be recommending the road to go from there. If we receive something that he feels is favorable for the city, then he will be forwarding from Gilmore and Bell, the legal counsel, the bond ordinance. And then that bond ordinance would need to be read twice at the main meeting in order for the bonds to be delivered to the successful bank on June 3rd. It's not always popular to read two at the... Two times at the same meeting. But this particular ordinance is what some lawyers would call boilerplate. It's very straightforward. It'll be a small book, but they are recommending we proceed this way. The option, if we do not receive a favorable response, is that we reject them all and move toward a private placement. And there would be additional costs, but we don't have to move forward down that road if we choose not to. So I just wanted to let you know tonight the process has begun, and we will know something by the end of April and ready to present at May's board meeting.
And this is not any new money. The purpose is we're getting a lower interest rate.
We're saving money.
Saving money. I make a... Scholzman Park sign approval, Chris.
So we've got some designs we're looking at. The designs that you guys wanted. We're working on that and getting prices. We've got... They done the locate, and they done it in the wrong area the first time. So we've re-submitted it. There's so many utilities on that corner, we're gonna have to place it very gingerly in there. So we don't wanna make them stay. Cut fiber. So we'll be hand-digging the holes, but I'm estimating we can bring it in under $2,000. So I just need approval to proceed with that design that we talked to a couple of you about. With the... It'll have a Scholzman Park above it, probably a four-bay or something like that. And then below it, it'd have a place for changeable letters for events, and then two rock columns.
For roughly $2,000?
We have some well casing. We have a lot of the stuff that we're gonna need. We'll need to purchase some of the fake rock. And one of the guys is a mason, so he'll be able to lay it.
And it says City of Forsyth on there?
Yeah. Yeah. I'll bring it... When we have the assignment laid out, I'll bring it to you guys and let you look at it before we proceed.
Okay. So you wanna take all approval at this time until we get that?
Well, you're gonna approve the spending. I just wanna make sure that you guys get to look at the design.
Maximum of $2,000.
I would move that we move forward with that. Scholzman Park sign. For $2,000. Or under $2,000.
I would second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I think it's important, it was pointed out recently, that nobody knows we have a park up there. We do have a park. We have a ball field. We have a children's playground with some equipment in it. We have a basketball court, and we have a tennis rebound area, a couple of pavions. So Forsyth does have a city park up there. We just need to put a sign up so you can find it.
And that's the park I need to keep water out of, right?
No. Good try. Okay, next on the agenda is property insurance and work comp insurance renewals.
I included a summary from Connell's Information that they submitted on our general liability, property auto coverage, and our work comp. Very small increases for those coverages. 7% on the general umbrella, 3% on work comp. The bonuses on the general policies that they agreed to a three-year rate guarantee. So we would have the luxury of this rate, barring any additions. You know, if we bought a new fire truck, that would probably raise our premium a bit. But based on what we have now, there'll be no change in rate for three years. So I would recommend that we accept their proposal unless you all have more questions.
Renewing the policy with no increase? That's unusual.
I would make a motion that we go ahead and accept the proposals for the property insurance and work comp renewals.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval of Fire Department applicants. And Nathan is not with us tonight. Do we have Kathy Bodie and Doris Sott here?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. If you would like to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to volunteer for the Fire Department, your interest in it.
Well, I'm Doris Sott. And I'm a retired nurse. Didn't have time while I worked to volunteer, but wanted to. Moved up here from Florida just a month ago. And willing and able, ready to go.
Nathan spoke highly of both of you, so we're glad to have you. How about Kathy?
Kathy Bodie. I'm also a registered nurse currently. My husband recently joined the Fire Department as volunteer firefighter. So I'm gonna help out on some of the medical side of the support team.
Two nurses won't hurt us a bit. Not at all.
I think that we have excellent candidates for this. And I would make a motion that we approve both of these ladies. And we're very thankful that you offered to join.
Let's say that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you for your willingness to help.
Okay, next on the agenda is approved collection policy and annual review procedure for unpaid utility accounts. Angela?
Part of the recommendations in the state audit were that we needed to formalize our collection policy, how we seek payment from people who have moved away and left us with a bill. And talking with Jack and looking at our ordinances, we talked about the sample that's in your packet. It's... It tightens up our collections to match what our ordinance says. And that is that if you're not paid on the last day of the month, you're subject to disconnection. Not two months in arrears, which is what we have been practicing. So this is gonna be kind of a shock to the system for some of our customers, but we've already given them notice, and we're trying to work through it this month with them. And I would foresee being ready to start this for the month of June. The ones that close their account, we apply their deposit, and they leave us with a bill. The policy says that we would send them, if they're not paid within 60 days of account closure, we'll send them to a collection agency. Doing that means we need to change our application form significantly, because right now, we don't collect anything except a name and address, basically. So I've included an application with this packet that has some basic information of what we would need to send an account to a bill collector. It's still pretty simple. Not a lot of difficulty in providing the information. It will mean that the person will have to be here in person in order to sign up for service. Because we'll need... We're not gonna transmit this information via email. That's not something we want to do. And speaking of that, the information will be collected and kept in the locked cabinet, as we do with the ACH information for their bank accounts for the auto pay program. It will all be stored securely, so it will not be laying out on a desk or floating around anywhere. Also, annually, we need to review the accounts that are hanging out there. And I've prepared a list of that for tonight. I've prepared half the list. And decide whether you feel that they are uncollectible. And if they are, then you would need to approve the write-off of those accounts. And then we would do that through the accounting system. It's a little bit of a new chore. They'll walk us through it with software. If someone were to come in to sign up for service again, and we looked at their name in the system and it said, "Oh, Mr. X has a back bill of $30 on his place on Main Street." We would still be able to collect that, and then it would go through a reverse accounting process to be sure that we collect that back bill before it is actually... It's never gonna be off of the books as far as the water system is concerned. It will still live in the customer information.
This is all recommended by our statements or audit that we just went through. We're tightening up our policy because we have to. I think 10 or 12 years ago, the city wrote off past due old uncollectible utilities. And we have not done that for several years. I'm not sure where we stopped or why we stopped changing personnel. It'll be a little bit tougher. We've gotta collect the information so that we can turn it into a collection agency. We can't give them any address, because when they move, we've lost them. A lot of our... Not all, but a lot of our past due uncollectibles or renters that have moved in and out. And you can't really trace them without getting this additional information.
And even though it looks like a large number dollar-wise, when you go back eight years of billing, it's roughly $40,000 within arrears. Amounts to about 1% of what we have billed. So percentage-wise, it's not a tremendous amount of uncollected accounts, but over time, it has added up.
Question if I could ask?
Sure.
So like, when you collect deposits for these people, do they let them charge their water over the deposit?
We collect a deposit for the meter hookup and turning it on. Then they start paying the bill at the end of the next month. If they fail to pay for a month, then we're gonna take our $100 refundable deposit and apply it to their bill and shut their water off.
But yes, there are customers who have more than $100 per month water bill.
That's what I was...
Yeah.
And I'm assuming we will monitor the collection agency effectiveness? And if it costs us more to refer it, then we're bringing in, we'll reconsider that.
From what I've seen, they take anywhere from 30% to 50%, depending on the agency you use. You're not paying upfront. They're taking it out of what they collect. So there would be no upfront for us. But still, we wanna get the best deal.
Yeah, and 50% is better than nothing. Okay, more questions on that? We need a motion to approve our collection policy?
I make a motion to approve our collection policies. And approve.
The second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
What's the next one?
Aye. The next one is to... Write off of unpaid utility accounts in the amount of $19,430.83.
This is the first half. The second half is not nearly this many dollars. Cheryl brought to my attention this afternoon some accounts that we may be able to collect if we make some strongly worded phone calls and maybe a couple of letters.
And again, this is an accumulation over the years?
This is an accumulation, yeah.
I would make a motion and go ahead and buy the board and approve these write-offs.
I would second that motion.
All in favor? Aye? Aye. Approved proposal for audit services.
I contacted the firm that Bill suggested. Talked to them at length. They had a lot of questions. I had a lot of questions, since they are far away from us. And the proposal that she sent back was no proposal. She said we start at $15,000 per year. That is a beginning base rate. And based on what our actual hours, travel expenses are, it could go up from there. So they declined to submit a proposal. So the only proposal we have left is the KPM, which is our current auditor.
And we have used them for how many years?
We've used them two separate occasions, I think, for nine years total. It's either six or nine. We had a break in there where we used Marshall Decker for three years.
If we can't get any other bids that were due strictly KPM and what was there would be of them out.
Yeah, but...
It was a 45%...
It was roughly $10,000 a year, basically.
Yeah, $31,200 for three years.
And are we committing to three years?
Yeah.
Well, in light of the difficulty in finding someone to make a bid on this, I would make a motion as we go ahead and approve the existing...
Don't come back here.
You want me to sit in your spot?
No, I want you to stand up here so that you may be properly sworn in.
Okay, I'll do that. Jack, you have a motion on the floor.
Okay, my motion. $10,000 per year is what we're estimating for a continued audit service.
A little bit over $10,000.
You second that?
Larry second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Back to the top.
Sorry, folks. New brand baby?
Hey, understand.
And she's really cute.
Sam, you're not old enough.
Aye?
Aye.
Kelly Nordy. Do some swear that I possess all qualifications for the office of Mayor of the City of Forsyth as described by law, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Missouri, the provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of this class and ordinances of the City of Forsyth, and faithfully to me and myself in office, so help me God.
Thank you. All right, where are we at?
Internet.
Internet. Internet domain change? Angela, you've been working on that?
I've been looking to find out how we can provide a secure email address for the police department and help the city become more compliant in email security and sunshine law availability for emails. And the .gov domain address is the first step that our IT guy is recommending we proceed with, followed by using our... I think it's called Microsoft 365. Now it has a new name. To provide our email in a secure setting. The domain change would cost us about $600 to accomplish. And then it is about $400 a year to maintain the listing. It's a strenuous process. They require actual verification that we are a city. And so the mayor would have to sign some applications and things to vet ourselves.
This would get us more in alignment for what we should be doing, should have been doing all along. So that's just part of the process.
Much more manageable way to do it.
All right, do we have a motion?
I would move that we go forward with seeing the domain and domain change.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye?
Thank you.
Do we need another motion on the archiving software? Or is this gonna be included with that?
No, she just stepped out at the time, so... She would have more information on that, so... Anyway, but we definitely need more of being able to archive stuff, so...
Angela, do we need more of a motion? Another motion for archiving software, or...
I haven't even shocked you guys with that information yet. I would like to find another vendor besides the one I've been talking to.
I'll look at that one that had approached me before and see what...
The one I'm talking to only archives social media, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, all those things, and our website does not address email. So I think we need to look at more vendors for that.
All right. So minutes of March 15, 2021 meeting?
I would make a motion we approve the minutes of March 15, 2021.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye.
Give me a second, I have a question.
No, he did.
Just scared you, you're very quiet today.
I'm very silent.
Yeah, I already do. All right, bills for approval?
Motion to pay the bills. March the 18, $7,390.95. March the 25, $135,327.52. And of that, $120,029 was to pay the capital improvement bond. So that's why that was so high. April the 1st, $11,717.88. April the 8th, $40,349.49. And April 15th, $19,843.73.
I would second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you for explaining for those that might not have known what that large amount was.
A little transparency.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, and then financial statement says in March 31st, 2021.
You've got your bank balances. Overall, we're up just a little bit over where we were last year, primarily due to general fund increases. primarily due to general fund increases in bank balances. On the backside of that, your minimum fund balance requirements are there. We are meeting what you have established by resolution completely, so that's a good thing, to meet our reserves as best we can. Budget overall looks really good. Our revenues are holding steady. Sales tax is down a couple thousand from last year, but that is not a tremendous decrease. It may bounce back in the next 30 days and be a couple thousand over from last year. So overall, we're doing pretty well.
I would make a motion to accept the financial statement.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Okay, approval of transfers from March 18th, 2021 through April 15th, 2021.
Motion to approve the transfers as stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
All right. Do we have anything we didn't get to before that? All right, does anybody have anything to add? Somebody? Oh, thank you. She is adorable, she's only six pounds, eight ounces. Yeah. A little baby one.
Well, if there's nothing else, I would make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.